Good evening and welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of September 14th, 2017. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Steve, we have on the screen, we have a very brief meeting tonight, but we do want to let the folks at home know what those few items are for the agenda. Okay, very good. We are going to begin the meeting as we do each first meeting of the month with the supervisor's report. And I will pull that up for the folks at home. What you will hear me read from each month is our balances. And this is the report ending August 31st. We started with a grand total opening balance of $5,710,391.97. We have receipts of $1,467,270.46. Disbursements of $2,338,669, leaving a remaining balance of $4,838.993. And we've got the bank statements there available for you. Some deposits and withdrawal. And Harry, I know that you always like to see-
Oh, you look good.
You did, okay. I'm happy to tell you that in September, we received a check in the community preservation fund of $27,000 and change, which brings our balance in that account to a very neat $900,000. And I'll be reporting on that next one. We have a few budget adjustments, but before then, would anybody like to make a motion that we approve the supervisor's report?
So move.
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor? We also have some budget adjustments that our bookkeeper has prepared for us. And they relate to the sidewalk work and to the tennis court. We had more appropriated for the tennis court to come out of cash. And since we are financing most of it, there's an adjustment to that number as well. If there are no questions about the budget adjustment-
I just have one question, just out of curiosity. I know with the new EV charging station, electric vehicle charging stations, that cost of the electricity is provided right through the grant or the program or something, isn't that right?
That's right. New York State picks up the charge, so-
So I see we have an increase in revenue. I'm just wondering how that works? We receive the revenue and then pass it on?
Well, there was a donation, myself included, of cost towards the charging for that. And so the other increase in revenue is $150, which we received from senior picnic contributions. So 200 towards the charging. It makes it easier for me billing-wise if I do town business and have to travel somewhere to pay for my own electric and then just bill at the mileage rate.
I see, okay.
That's why there's some revenue in there.
Gotcha.
All right. If there are no other questions, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the budget adjustments?
So move.
Second. Very good. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And now we have the clerk's report. Sue McCann?
This is clerk's report, August 1st through August 31st, 2017. Total local shares remitted to supervisor is town revenue $1,609.64. Excuse me. Amount remitted to New York Ag and Market, $74. Amount remitted to New York Department of Health for marriage licenses, $135. And New York State Environmental Conservation, $2,118.36. For a total state, county, and local revenue, $3,937. And this is pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the Town Law. I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Tannehill, during the period stated above in connection with my office. Excuse me for coughing here.
That's okay, Sue.
We do have one announcement, if I can cough through it. It's, I just received this from Poughkeepsie. It's Dutchess County Division of Solid Waste. And they're having a household hazardous waste disposal, thank you Linda, Saturday, October 21st. It's from 8:00 a.m. till 12:30. And it's held down at Poughkeepsie. There's a $10 prepay required. It's really a great deal. I have utilized this myself. And all the information is on our town website at www.reh hook.org, if anybody's interested.
Great. Thank you very much, Sue.
You're welcome.
Would anybody like to make a motion that we accept the clerk's report?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Adding two announcements. As you all probably know, Art Scrabble Day is just two days away on the 16th. The festivities begin at 10:00 a.m. and the bands perform well into, I think, about 9:30, 10 o'clock at night. So that's this Saturday, September 16th. The following Saturday is Tivoli Street Painting, which is a wonderful event. I think now in its, wow, maybe 11th year in a row there. That is on Broadway in Tivoli. And that begins sometime around 9:00, 9:30 in the morning. Hope to see you there. Other announcements, last Friday, we had a special meeting to approve a Greenway grant application that relates to the activities that are under a moratorium right now, which is large-scale commercial extractive operations. That includes commercial water bottling facilities as well as mining. As we, I think, told you at our last meeting, those activities are permitted under our current code within the residential district. So we really want to take a look at some sort of rational guidelines for those activities. We also received, notice that we were getting two municipal innovation grant awards that we applied for. One relates to the analysis for the municipal solar farm project. We received $45,000 for those expenses and shared court facilities, the town, the village. So we received that grant as well. And we hope to report on those activities to you in the coming months. And those are the announcements that I had. Does anybody else have any other announcements? Okay, very good. Thank you very much. It is that time of the evening for public comments. Would somebody like to make some public comments? Linda, please.
I'm here because my letter from 8:23 for the public hearing was not read or acknowledged in the official minutes. The letter was received before noon and email confirmed it by Supervisor McCann. Without my letter being in there, your moratorium has to be considered incomplete and legally not enforceable. So I think you should be doing that public hearing over. I brought my letter with me so that people could hear it, since it was not read. Section 1 Legislative Intent. This does not include air protection, air quality protection, from air particles which could impact soil and water quality. Particulates landing on or in water could make its way into drinking water through land disturbances. In addition, commercial soil extraction puts particle matter into the air affecting human lung health. Air quality therefore is a third natural resource and should be given the same environmental protections as soil and water. This legislation is remiss in not addressing this essential resource when instituting a proposed moratorium. See New York State Conservationist, August 2017, Official Magazine of the New York State, D E C. It says, "Air quality is taking a more proactive support and importance." On page 27, quote, "Community air monitoring," it states, "D E C offers a number of air quality programs to protect public health and our environment, including air screening. Through the Community Air Screening Program, which was launched in 2012, D E C works with community groups and local volunteers to conduct air quality surveillance that can identify and address neighborhood air quality concerns. Participants from local communities actually use equipment to conduct air sampling for toxic pollutants." Number 2, Section 2 Moratorium E Exemptions. The withdrawal of water should not exceed the natural replenish rate through rainfall and snow melt measurements. The withdrawal amount should be modified when drought conditions are in effect. And contaminated soil removals could easily provide contaminated dust particulates that could travel on the wind. Therefore, a neutral third party should monitor all withdrawals and recharge rates. This is necessary to avoid the political manipulation of town's zoning enforcement officer by town board members while trying to fulfill the specific zoning protections of his or her job. Again, from the above, New York State Conservationist, page 29. It states, "The newest field of study is small particulates, what we call PM 2.5 and ultrafine particles. These tiny particles are less than 2.5 microns and under .1 micron in size, respectively. So small, they are invisible to the human eyes. Yet scientific research has revealed the potential havoc they can cause our bodies, with studies showing a negative effect on cardiopulmonary health. During periods of extended high temperatures, regions in New York may be under air health quality advisory, recommending people take precautions when outdoors or stay inside due to high levels of ground ozone or particulate matter. There are plenty of things added to air that makes us unhealthy and always, excuse me, and almost all are the result of human activity," end quote. In conclusion, it's my opinion, this legislation, as written, is incomplete by not mentioning the protection of air quality for the health of Red Hook citizens. Only then can this legislation be considered complete."
Thank you, Linda. Just a couple of responses. On the letter that you wrote of being read for the record, Sue did acknowledge that we had two pieces of correspondence for the record. And yes, your letter is a part of the record, but-
I did not read that in the minutes.
Okay, it may not have been in the minutes, but she did acknowledge it.
That's the official recording of what happened.
The other thing on air quality, very important. You know, so any thoughts you have that we should take a look at at the same time? But the moratorium is to preclude any and specific activities that were included within water bottling and with mining. But it doesn't necessarily mean we can't address our code-
The fact that my letter was not read makes that public hearing incomplete and not enforceable.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Thank you for your comment. All right, any other? Very good. We have our first item for the evening is a resolution authorizing letting of sealed bids and requesting proposals for purchase of various materials for the Highway Department. Each year, we go out to bid for basic materials that the Highway Department utilizes. We're talking about hot mixed asphalt, ice control abrasives, and so on and so forth. We have a list here from our Highway Department. And so the public knows, we go out to bid on all these materials to make sure that we get the best pricing for the money. And let's see, this might be a good list. Here we go. These are the materials that we're going out to bid for. And this is to allow, in the course of the next month, for vendors to provide pricing for these items. Asphalt abrasives, cold mix, stone dust, item 4, fill rip raft, stone, topsoil. We buy in fairly large quantities and we utilize it during the course of the year. Some of these items are subject to sealed bids, some of them request for proposals. Are there any questions about the materials that you have?
This is for next year.
This is for next year, right. The bids actually come in this year, but the materials are essentially utilized next year. All right. If there are no questions, we have resolution, I believe it's 61.
It is.
Very good. Dated September 14th, 2017, it's a resolution authorizing the town clerk to advertise a request for sealed bids for the purchase of ice control abrasives, a request for sealed bids for hot mixed asphalt, and a request for proposals for various materials and services for 2018. Whereas the Highway Superintendent of the Town of Red Hook has requested the town proceed with advertising for highway materials and services required for 2018, including requests for sealed bids for ice control abrasives, sealed bids for hot mixed asphalt, and a request for proposals for various materials and services. Now therefore be resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook does hereby authorize and direct the town clerk to advertise for a request for sealed bids and a request for proposals that's directed by the Highway Superintendent in accordance with the foregoing specifications and I so move.
Second.
All right, well, we'll give that one to Bill. Are there any questions about any of the information, the bid specifications that you have? All right, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The second item on the agenda is we have a homeowner who lives adjacent to the Water District who would like to connect. And that connection is done at the expense of the individual homeowner. And in fact, they end up paying a premium to what folks in the Water District pay for the same amount of water. And that ends up helping out the overall cost effectiveness of the Water District. So we have the agreement that has been drafted and signed. We have a resolution. There's also a map showing you where that homeowner is.
Can I just ask, I'm really, I'm totally in favor of this, but I live right across from them and I, I'm in the district, so I'm surprised they're not. But I guess maybe that side of this Colonial Drive isn't. I've never looked at a map of the Water District.
The map is in your, in your-
No, I see the map, but it doesn't show where the Water District is, at least as far as I can see.
It's actually toward the, toward the east side of Colonial. And it, and these are, I think you see those driveways there? There, there's three narrow, narrow frontages.
That side of the street is actually the odd side.
I believe that the Water District includes both sides of Colonial Drive, as you see from this lot. Sarah, maybe it's not apparent. This is a very large lot that's adjacent to all those lots.
I see, I see, I see.
Okay. I was wrong in what I was thinking.
Got it.
No worries.
Sure.
But it's a, it's a flag lot.
Yeah, I was just curious, you know, I was just curious, because I thought that whole area was, but that makes sense.
Yep. Okay, well, we have resolution number 62. Who would like to read it? William, would you like to read resolution number 62?
It is the resolution authorizing the execution of an out-of-district water service agreement. Whereas the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook has determined that entering into an out-of-district water service agreement between the Town of Red Hook and certain out-of-district connections in substantially the form on file with the town clerk is in the best interest of the town. And whereas the proposed action constitutes a type 2 action under Seeker and has been determined under Seeker not to have a significant impact on the environment. So now therefore be it resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook that the supervisor is hereby authorized and directed to execute an out-of-district water service agreement for property located at 46 Colonial Drive and substantially the forms on file with the town clerk. With such changes, it shall be approved by the supervisor and which do not affect the substance thereof. And the supervisor, the town clerk, and the town's other officers, employees, and agents are hereby authorized and directed for and in the name of and on behalf of the town to do all acts and things required or provided by the provisions of the out-of-district water service agreement. And this resolution shall take effect immediately. I so move.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah, for seconding. Any questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Sue, I'm going to give this to you, all right? All right, very good. So that's item number 3. Sarah, you had asked for the Town Board to get a look at sort of the latest draft, discussion draft anyway, on solar zoning. And so not for any action tonight, but just for the folks at home, because you all have had this draft for a while. And so you're fairly familiar with it, but maybe just a couple of highlights. And Dennis Collet, who's been instrumental in coordinating a lot of the task force work and looking at other solar zoning codes, is kind enough to be here tonight to give us just a few minutes of the highlights in it. And then we can sit with it over the course of the next couple of weeks. Dennis, thank you.
So good evening. The intention behind this, it's really a very short, you know, five-slide presentation is I wanted to highlight the areas that we're addressing in solar zoning legislation. As you know, we haven't had any zoning legislation regarding solar installations, small, medium, or large. It turns out that for residential homes, if you, if you don't mind, young man, could you please-
Yes, thank you. Anybody who calls me young gets what I'm saying.
That's it, thank you. As we're aware, there have been applications that have been, have come before the zoning board to, the planning board, to, to install large-scale solar in different properties. And our position has been that no permits could be issued because we didn't know how to regulate that zoning. So this is a timely point for us to, to actually address this in some zoning code. Our intention is to really decrease the use of fossil fuels in the town and lower our carbon footprint. We want to encourage projects that would be installed in the right location where it doesn't conflict with rural historic or agricultural use of the land. So we're very sensitive to those issues as part of this legislation, as you'll see. And the other, of course, important point is that with climate change and the issues that we're confronting, we need to add resilience to the grid. So anything that we can do to encourage solar in our community will be helpful for our future. So essentially, understanding what, what kinds of solar that's being installed, I took the opportunity to cut three, four different slides here. One showing rooftop solar, integrated, building-integrated solar, a large array, and then pole-mounted solar. So typically, a, a small solar system, that residential, would be under 25 kilowatts. I'm not going to go into all the details on how much power that generates over the year, but suffice it to say, our average consumption is about, nationwide is about 10 megawatt hours or 10,000 kilowatt hours per year, per family. That's the average across the United States. The medium solar system would be, you know, for a large, fairly large farm or an operation, would be between 25 kilowatts and 200 kilowatts. And then a large scale that would be addressing multiple, you know, either commercial or multiple families that would support, that would be above 200 kilowatts, 2 megawatts. They can be roof-mounted, integrated in the building. Many of you may have heard about Tesla creating these roofing tiles. That's an example of an integrated system. And ground mounted, which are pole typically or a fixed array. Thanks. So what are the locations that we've, we've come up with? We've decided, or we're proposing that, that the small, medium, and large solar systems could be installed in any zoning district. However, as ground mounted, meaning that you're, they're going to have, even though they're going to have height restrictions, they would be prohibited in the TNH, HLO, B1, and WC zoning districts. Medium and large solar energy systems will require a site plan, require many, have other requirements, including screening and a decommissioning plan in order to make sure that if a developer were to develop this, the town would not be left with the responsibility of figuring out how to dispose of whatever they've abandoned. So, so we're, you know, there, there's legislation. So some of the language in the, in the zoning legislation covers issues of, you know, fiduciary responsibility and ensures that those things are managed and addressed appropriately. Large solar energy systems will require also special use permits, you know, which will again be more restrictive in nature. Additional requirements, the agricultural business district. We've, we've kind of determined at this particular point that we don't want to utilize prime soils and soils of statewide importance, which are the foundation for the agriculture in our area. New York State Ag and Markets, however, permits on-farm use so that if a farmer does require, you know, wants to be able to energize their operation with solar, the systems without any, would be, they would be able to do that, do an installation without onsite, without site, citing restrictions. And they're able to generate up to 110% of their power requirements. They'd have to, they'd have to determine that and they'd have to prove that that's the purpose of their use. But, but otherwise, they will not be under the guidance of our zoning legislation. So no large ground mounted systems will be installed on, on a designated wetland. And I think that's it. That's the, these are, again, just the highlights of what we're, we're attempting to address. And, you know, I certainly look forward, I'll come back, you know, in a few weeks after you've had a chance to digest this and- red, redlining, right?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions here?
My only thought is there's been an ongoing effort in the town to look at the Hamlet Business District, B1 District, and Upper Red Hook. And if there's legislation to create a Hamlet Business District, that would have to be added to this list along with the Hamlet and the B1, right?
It's actually already in there.
I'm sorry?
It's actually already in there.
The HLO and H-
On some, just on, on some types, so that was a question I had, since it doesn't-
Well, it depends which goes first, the HB or the solar, so just for-
Just something to flag, because if it doesn't exist yet, maybe we shouldn't put it in, but Bill has a point, that obviously.
That's a detail, yeah. So, thank you for that. So thank you for that. Also, in your packets, um, coincidentally, the July, August twenty seventeen, um, Dutchess County Planning Federation speaks to, uh, uh, solar zoning. And they have some recommendations. They're not quite as restrictive as we are here in, in this draft proposal. Um, but it's something that you wanna read and, and compare this proposal against their recommendations.
I have, I have that, that same document a, a year plus ago that was, uh, much more strident in promoting, promoting solar. In this one, there's a, a substantial number of caveats that we should, I think we should be taking into consideration. And I think as time goes on, it, it, I have, I have, um, noticed that, uh, there's, there's a lot more concerns about what, what, uh, solar can do to the community. So, you know, I think we have to have solar, but I also think we need to preserve the quality of, of, of the life in, in Red Hook.
Okay, thank you, Harry. If you think that, um, there aren't those protections in this code, please, you know, give us some-
Tell you later.
Recommendations. Okay, and then, uh, I think this draft has been circulated to many other committees. Um, we didn't get any, uh, feedback really, except for one, one correspondence. Um, but we certainly can reach out again to, uh, those committees and more committees as we proceed. So let's, uh, take up this issue again, maybe next meeting, if we have something that we'd like to do. Very good. Well, that is essentially, uh, most of the meeting. We have, uh, I don't really have any correspondence to share with you. Um, I'll solicit, uh, any more public comments if there aren't any otherwise. Uh, Linda, you'd like to make some more comments?
NRGs were coming around.
Mm-hmm, I'm aware of that.
And you sign up and it's for a solar farm, so you get, uh, ten percent credit. How, how does that affect what's going on here?
Well, you know, there, there are, um, can I answer that or?
Well, if you, if you'd like to answer, I mean, typically, public comments to the board, but sure, fine, come on up and, and, uh, take a crack at it. And maybe do point out, because I think Linda, uh, mentions a particular company, but there have been companies supposedly going door-to-door soliciting customers claiming there's a Red Hook farm being constructed. There's no affiliation with the municipal farm that's being contemplated here. Certainly, they're not working with any kind of approvals or-
So with the town.
That's the guys there, because I received a phone call from somebody. And an elderly person happened to sign a contract and her sister was very upset by it and felt that this company was going out saying it was approved by the town of Red Hook.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's concerning. It's, but, but, but it's a good, you know, this is a good point. What, what's happening is because, you know, at all of these companies, these developers are looking for what they, we would call low-hanging fruit, right? The idea is that sun is free energy. If they can get a, um, an incentive from the state or from the federal government, which still is in effect until twenty twenty, um, it might cost them half the actual cost to build a solar farm. And, uh, a- again, our legislation, you know, it, it doesn't really matter as long as it's in Central Hudson territory. People could subscribe to, um, what they would call a power purchase agreement where they would agree to buy power from them. NRG apparently has gone and, you know, this is again anecdotal information. I don't, I haven't spoken to a salesperson from, uh, NRG, but what they've done is they've, uh, given a proposal that, um, you can purchase power from them. You have to sign a contract for twenty years with a, um, you know, there's a penalty for early, um, you know, cancellation. So, uh, it's some, something in the order of six hundred dollars. I'm not quite sure what the number is, right? Six hundred dollars. And, um, but what the, the kicker is that, that within two years, you'll, you'll pay, they'll give you a fifteen percent discount within two years, so, uh, they'll start adding an escalator clause. An escalator clause means that you'll pay an additional one point five percent potentially on your electricity bill. And they're trying to convince you that Central Hudson's rates will go up faster than their rates will. So even though you'll catch up with Central Hudson, uh, you'll never exceed that. So over the twenty years, you'll, you'll basically get a discount. They don't tell you where the farm is. The intention is to get the subscribers to sign up, pay their money, and then they'll build it. You know, so, uh, they haven't, they haven't really determined. Nobody's telling us where, where they have actually a solar farm. So, uh, buyer beware.
Do they have to be licensed or by the state of New York to solicit the, these contracts?
I don't know anything about the-
That legislation in Albany didn't cover that subject, I guess.
Yeah, I, I don't think so.
Is there anything to protect you of it, if it is never built?
Yeah, again, that's, that's sort of private enterprise.
I'll, I'll ask you to tell me whether.
We, we don't really enter into that. We would just say that if anybody is representing that there's a, a municipal farm installation or, uh, an installation associated with the town, that's not the case yet. Um, we'll be sure to tell you if our municipal solar farm project does in fact, uh, get constructed. And, um, whether it's this type of activity or any other, uh, type of activity, we would encourage you, if you wanna know whether or not there's an affiliation with the municipality, to please call us here in Town Hall first before you entertain any kind of a notion on, um, you know, going to contract with any entity. Okay, uh, very good. Um, that concludes our rather quick, uh, meeting. I will, uh, however, have to tell you that I will make a motion now to enter executive session, um, for a matter under litigation. Would somebody be kind enough to second that?
Second.
All right, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you at home.
And Mr. Martin?
Please.
Three.